I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Okay. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
And Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you very much. So next, we have the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council, several things to report tonight. First, we had our Terrace Talk event last night focused on utilities. It was really well-attended, and I was happy for that. We were able to share a lot of the information we have about our infrastructure and water sewer lines. We had eight people in person, including Councilmember Payne Donovan, and then we had 21 people online, viewed it online, including a couple councilmembers, Councilmember Murray and Councilmember Woodard. So that was fantastic. Couple other things. Lots of opportunities upcoming to engage with city processes. The first one I wanted to note was is the open house for the comprehensive plan process that we're going through at the moment. That'll be held on March 26th here in this room. And on April 2nd, we will have a community public forum to talk about budgeting priorities for the 2526 budget, which is getting underway as we speak. And then on April 20th, we have a celebration for Arbor Day that will take place and be involved in some cleanups around the community. So, next thing I wanted to report, we have had an amazing, we've had amazing success recruiting for our aquatics program. And at the pavilion, we've hired eight new folks over the course of the past two weeks, and that is going to allow us to expand programming in the pavilion for swimming. And we are very hopeful soon that we'll be able to open the pavilion for opportunities on Sundays. So that's great. It's getting back to what we are used to pre-pandemic, which is always nice. A couple other things to work on 66. The roadwork there is going great. This great weather that we're having is going to help that substantially, and we anticipate that next week is when we will have a full closure of that roadway. In order to do a lot of the work, that's going to be painful for a little while, but it will pay dividends for years down the road. And also want to mention Commander King for his work on the Deloxone program, the Narcan that we distribute to community members who might see a need for that. We were able to get great media coverage for that from King Five, Mountain Lake Terrace News, and the Herald. So that's, getting the word out about that is a good thing. That's actually all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. On the meeting April 2nd, is there a specific time yet on that?
We are planning for 6 to 8, but when we, we will lock that, lock that time in, and it'll be a public forum similar to ones we've had recently where it'll be a hybrid option. And people will have the opportunity to ask questions in the chat, and we'll read those loud and answer those at the forum.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. So now, we are going to go on to the presentations of the boards and commissions. And is Carolyn going to be doing that, or?
It looks like the Arts Advisory Commission is, is first on the list.
Okay.
So I think Jeff, I'm not sure who's going to introduce that one?
No, we have, we have.
Renee, okay, Renee's there.
You want all, everybody to come up? Well, we can add more chairs. Bear with me. I need to, I need to share my screen. Yeah. This one? I guess I'll put this up. Oh, there we go. Do you want to talk? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we have a lull for a moment here, and we have all four commissions here, I can all get your flowers individually. But recognizing that not everybody has the ability to stay the entire time, wanted to take this moment to back up, and we were just talking about next year's budget, and make sure that all four commissions hears this, from this council. In this year's budget, this council set up a fund, if you will, for all of the commissions. The way in which that was done, because government has a line item for everything, wasn't as clean as we would have liked. But nonetheless, if you were to look at how we looked at it, each commission has a line and a number. However, that wasn't intended, and this is where we get into, well, this is what we tried to communicate, but at the end of the day, there's what's written down, and there's what the intention is. So what's written down is this commission, this dollar amount, this commission, this dollar amount. I'll even point out that some are on the general fund, one is on the ARPA funds, which implies, well, that's securities aren't. Again, none of that was what we were intending. Our intention is to make sure that all of those monies end up in one pool that all of you pull from, preferably collectively and meaningful ways. Which means, yes, your commission can create its own budget, its own need, its own down the line, but the hope in creating the money wasn't to create competition amongst you all, it was to create opportunities to collaborate. So just want to make sure that we said that, and that gives every council member now a chance to tell them what they think they remember we were doing. Because I'm trying to get on record with the intent so that when everybody on this council wins the Lotto this weekend, you don't have to figure out what were we trying to do. What we were trying to do was get you all to work closer together. Which is to say, you might have thought we got dressed up because it's pitcher day. No, this is absolutely, at least in my experience, historic. In my five-year tenure, this is the first time we've had all of our commissions on the same night. And it should have been like that all along. That way, you all hear the same thing, maybe differently, but at least it was in the same room on the same agenda. So it's just wonderful to have you all in the same space, wonderful to be able to tell you, but first, we gave you money. And more importantly, just wonderful to have you here telling us how you've been rocking it without money, because we know that next year is going to be that much better. So with that laid as some groundwork, looking forward to hearing your reports.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Renee Norton. I am the Support Services Supervisor at Recreation and Parks and the Staff Liaison for the Arts Advisory Commission. They are here tonight to present to you their 2023 accomplishments as well as their 2024 work plan. And I am going to introduce Chair Connor Ryan to start the presentation.
Hello. Thanks, Renee. Okay, quick agenda. Covering the commission members, our mission, 2023 accomplishments, 2024 work plan, and then questions. Voila. Moving on to our commission members, some of which are here tonight, you have me, Vice Chair Seneschal is in the crowd, Commissioner Ryan is also here, Commissioner Mercer is also here, and then we have Commissioner French, Commissioner Ho, and Commissioner Hoff. Our mission statement, the Arts Advisory Commission strives to nurture, support, and promote cultural arts as a vital element of the community's quality of life, economic viability, and vibrant community identity. Our roles and responsibilities, most of which are unchanged, collaborate with artists, business, government, education, residents, and guests, create opportunities for artists including visual performing and literary arts, encourage public and private partnerships to provide funding, position cultural arts as community and economic building blocks, engage community to educate, inform, and inspire, and promote understanding of diverse cultures, ages, and abilities. Moving on to our accomplishment. First bullet is technically, should be modified. We obtained the City of Mountain Lake Terrace Hotel Motel Tax Grant in 2023. And with that, coordinated with the Friends of the Arts in support of the 43rd Annual Arts of the Terrace Juried Art Show. The 43rd Art Show last year was, I think, probably the best show we've had in the time that I've been involved in it, which is quite a long time. We had pretty much a record turnout in terms of entries, attendance, and I think most of you were at the preview party, so you saw, you know, we, we continue to pack the, these chambers and looking forward to this year's show. There's some numbers there, but we sold a lot of art. We had a lot of different artists from across the region. We even have people from other states either shipping their art in or, or driving up to visit. So very successful show and looking forward to this year's as well. Other accomplishments, we did recommend artist Miguel Edwards to the council for the Pedestrian Plaza Art Installation, which we are excited and looking forward to see come to fruition. Continued community outreach efforts, website, news releases, city happenings, craze recreational program guide, postcards, and social media. And we continued to host and advertise the monthly art exhibits at the Mountain Lake Terrace Library, which are obviously continuing this year as well. 2024 work plan, schedule and promote monthly art exhibit to the library. We have artists booked for every month throughout this year. Identify and develop a list of artists and art patrons in the city, and continuing to expand our outreach and our contact list. Identify, evaluate, and apply for grants and other funding opportunities. We've continued to being able to fund the Arts of the Terrace through the City of Mountain Lake Terrace's lodging tax grant, so we're appreciative of that. Identify partnership and our sponsorship opportunities, and again, obviously coordinate with the Friends of the Arts in support of the Arts of the Terrace Juried Art Show. More, encourage and promote more live entertainment in the city. We're excited to work with Andrew, now that he is on board, to help select live music and plays in the city. Creating opportunities for artists including visual performing and literary arts, and expanding volunteer opportunities for art-related programs. Let's see, more community outreach, serving as a selection committee for the Manassood Art Scholarship Fund, and exploring locations for the 1% for the arts. And that was a very, very quick presentation. I might have beaten my record from last year, so, but open for discussion and questions.
Are there any questions, comments? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chair Ryan. Appreciate having you here and having you both here to, to share the work that you've been doing. I will say, yeah, I enjoyed the, the art show very much this year and appreciate how that continues to build and grow post-pandemic, and wanted to particularly commend you. Appreciated your process for the, for the art recommendation. I came to the public forum that you did where you brought in the, the four finalist artists, and I just, I thought that entire process was very community-focused, and appreciated all of kind of the thought and care that went into getting to a decision there. So I'm just excited about all of the things that you were doing and excited as we look forward, particularly as we talk about kind of expanding our, you know, the type of art that we are, you know, putting forth to our community. I know there's a lot of appetite for that, and so excited to, to hear more about that as you guys progress in that work. So, but thank you all for being here and for all of the work that you do.
Thank you.
Anyway, Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited about how the Arts Commission is expanding and will be looking at different musicians on April 2nd at 5:30 to select certain artists, musicians to play in the city for us this year. Thank you.
He's, he's not, he won't be selected, unfortunately.
Could, could I do an audition right now?
Yeah, we're excited that Andrew is now on board, because I think that allows us to be involved in selection and, and looking at that, but also having someone that can actually manage all of like the event coordinated work that is very heavy lift to put on really any event. So it's, it's exciting that we finally have someone to engage with those. So excited to expand a little bit more outside of just the Arts of the Terrace.
All right, Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to express gratitude to the entire Arts Commission. Another wonderful year in, year out, day-to-day example of how to do art, civic engagement and education, all in a very thoughtful way. That said, I'm excited for your next opportunity, which was the 1% of the arts, and just wanted to hear your thoughts. I think last time you all were with us, Ballenger Lake was on the list. I don't know if you've expanded, come up with a little more concrete ideas or anything like that, but just curiosity if you could speak to some of that.
Yeah, that's a good question. I think outside of the plaza, we've discussed various sites, primarily obviously with Jeff involved, and I don't know where we're at actually on making actual selections for locations. There's been a lot of discussion about various places, obviously Ballenger being one of them. I think, I'm not sure where we're at though on, on progressing further on that, but being involved at least in the plaza project was eye-opening for me, because that was my first involvement in like the whole, like RFP and selection process for artists. So I think we'd follow a similar process with the rest of the spots. But I think Ballenger probably is up there for an ideal spot for it with all the transformation that's been going on there.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Chair Connor, if you will. Great presentation. I think you've, you've touched on something that I think community and, and we've noticed is sort of the, the sort of energy that's come out of the pandemic and a lot of the, the work that you're doing, as well as the, the new infrastructure we're getting as a, as a city. And along those lines, curious, and this is maybe not a specific ask, but more of a question about how we might, as, as a city, through the Arts Commission, work with like the, the chamber. I know that, you know, there are neighboring cities that have efforts to work with businesses that, to sort of cite murals or to sort of liven up, you know, where there's not sort of specific public money for art, encourage other sort of artistic expression around town. So realize that's not necessarily squarely within the, the commission's purview, but, but wanted to sort of plant that seed, especially as, as we're, as the city's putting money towards working with the, the chamber to just sort of reinforce and invigorate their, their efforts.
Yeah, so like specifically with, with our, the businesses operating in our city, yeah, I think, I think that's a, a probably a pretty big opportunity that maybe hasn't had as much outreach to local businesses. And you do see examples of them kind of like already doing a lot of that. Like, I know Hemlock has a regularly rotating art that they hang for different artists. And I've seen the, the high school jazz band play at Lake Vegas. So like, you can tell there's, there's definitely an appetite for it. And I think, and maybe that is, like, involving in business outreach specifically is something maybe we haven't tapped into as much. So it'd be interesting to see what opportunities there are to partner or at least put a face to the names that they have, like, they know they're supported and encouraging a lot of those art-type efforts. And as the downtown core expands, I think, and more businesses come in, there's probably going to be more and more opportunity to do that. But it is exciting to see some of them already kind of naturally doing it too, which is pretty exciting. And I've seen even various types of like, well, I guess not necessarily specific chamber, but like that makers market that happened briefly at the Rogers Park Lot. I thought that was a really cool involvement and very big turnout, even though obviously that's not put on by us. And so I think, yeah, there's a lot of appetite for it, and I think we have more support to engage with those businesses too.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess I just want to encourage you and staff where there are opportunities, you know, whether it's where we as council or we as sort of the, you know, face of basin, sort of, sort of people of, of government have a chance to, you know, sort of elevate those, those opportunities. I think we have, we have solid examples of the appetite for that, and want to make sure we, we take those, those opportunities. So.
Yeah, I think, I think we can explore ways to at least, at least create relationships with the businesses and know that they have like the support of the Arts Commission, at least in terms of like bouncing ideas off, or if they need identifying contacts of like artists that they want to hang, hang artwork in their, in their business or that kind of stuff. So I think there is a lot of opportunity for that that's probably untapped.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quick, because Councilmember Payne Donovan's comment sparked a thought for me. One of the things we did this last year, and I don't think anybody from the Art Commission was there that I recall, but we did a ribbon cutting. We have a new art studio in Mountain Lake Terrace, and so we did a ribbon cutting with, I think it's Hart Art Studio up on 220th. So I think we've got a great new art-focused business here in Mountain Lake Terrace, and that might be one of the businesses that it would be helpful to connect with here.
Yeah, that is a, that's a really good call. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see that, so that's exciting.
Okay. Do you have something? Mayor Protem?
I was trying to refrain, but I can't help myself. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Connor, and all of you guys on the Arts Commission. Just really appreciate everything you do and have done, and particularly looking forward to, as has been shared, where we're going and expanding and bringing more live entertainment to the community. And along the lines of planting the seeds, I love the idea of working together with the chamber. But the other thing, speaking of Councilmember Woodard's previous comments as far as the budget, one of my dreams for how we might utilize that, those funds is coordinating with DEI on putting on culture, just planting a seed for both of y'all, to put on cultural events and just, you know, highlight different cultures and different, you know, the song and dance and music and food and, you know, to kind of put on community, mini-community fairs or something like that, celebrating the different cultures we have in our community. Anyway, looking forward to seeing where we're going on, on all of this.
Yeah, I agree. And that's something we've, we've talked quite a bit about, and I think that's going to be an important part of like, making sure we have a diverse set of selections for these various like live events in the city too. So that's, yeah, that's a good, good call out.
All right, anyone else? I guess not. You did a great job.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next is the DEIC Commission, DEI Commission. Who wants to be up here for that? We can move more chairs up here, or even along the edge over there. I think, I think we have enough chairs now. You can still. You need to turn it on.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. I'm honored to introduce tonight the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. I have with us tonight William Page, the Chair, Vanita, Francisco, Teresa Courtney, and Scott Matsuda. And I've been working with them since about last July, and I just want to commend them for all of their wonderful work. I have been honored to work with such devoted and enthusiastic group of people, and you'll see why here just shortly. And it's on to you, William.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, various commissions and boards, and hopefully we got some Mountain Lake Terrace residents that either watching or will watch. You know, it's really a pleasure to be here. Just a quick note on the mission statement that we have up. You know, the fourth quarter of 2022, first quarter of 2023, you know, the council, the commission was really struggling with trying to decide, you know, who we were, what we were, what we wanted to do, what we needed to do, what we needed to say, who we needed to say it for, and who we needed to say it to. And we realized as a commission that we needed a better roadmap than what we had. And so members of the previous commission got together and rewrote the mission statement, you know, something that could give us some stirage, you know, going into 2023 and 2024. We also knew that we was getting ready to have a big transition of committee, of commission members. So we needed something that, you know, could help, you know, keep us on course and, and, and help answer the questions that in 2019, November, I think it was October, November, December 19, when you all got together and spoke about, you know, having a DEI and the, and the concerns and the things that you wanted to see happen, you know, that ask we knew that we had to kind of focus on. And, you know, so the, the mission statement that we came up was, you know, a DEIC that was going to celebrate and promote a diverse, equitable, and inclusive culture within the community. That's what you asked for. All right. And we came up with like four things that we thought could help us do that. And one of the first one was to identify, address DEI issues, you know, promote DEI programs, and provide those type of recommendations to the city. We also needed to be able to input to the city departments, you know, equitable access to city services and facilities. We also felt, and this was, I think, what you're going to hear from our group, because we're all going to present today, is to facilitate relationships and with the underserved and underrepresented communities. And I think you're going to be excited to hear, you know, what we've done in that regard. We also knew that we need to serve as a resource for the city government as well as the community, you know, by giving you information, education, and communication that can really celebrate a better understanding of, of our differences. Kind of sound like what the arts are saying they're going to do also, right? So we're not that far apart. One of the things that I really wanted to highlight, you know, in 2023 for this mission statement that I keep going back to was, if you all remember, in the summer, there was, at the pavilion, you know, a poster that members of the community thought was racially insensitive. Because of our presence, you know, we found out about it when they found out about it that night. We got on the phone, talked to council members, talked to the mayor. We went and looked at the, the poster the next day. We got an opportunity to talk to the director of the pavilion. We were able to also spend time with members of the community that, and this is all happened within like 48 hours, you know, and to sit with them and hear their concerns. And what I'm very proud about is that, you know, our commission was able to facilitate a meeting between all the parties that gave them an opportunity for better cultural understanding of our differences and to give us some real healing as a community. And to me, that's what. discussion. So again, who are our commissioners? For those of y'all don't know me, I'm the co-chair, and I'm the chair right now currently of the DEIC. Karim Onad, who was the co-chair, vice chair, he's not here today as he's celebrating Ramadan. Vanita Francisco, she has been with us since 2022. Teresa Courtney, who's been with us since 2023. Scott Matsuda's been with us since 2023. And Kermit Apio, who is our resident musician and comedian, who's actually, I think, working in Edmonds right now. We really had hoped he'd be here, you know, so that he can add a little bit of something to the meeting, but he's not here. But two important people that we can't, we could not have gotten this far without, who's currently working with us. And I'd be remiss if I didn't start off by always thanking, you know, Dr. Woodard, because he helped get us started as a commission, as our council liaison. But we have Erin Murray, who's in her second term with us, and she's, you know, keeps us up to date, gives us a lot of advice, and there when we need her. And Carolyn Hope, our staff liaison is, I tell you, hope is what she gives us, you know? And it seems like she's always answering our call whenever we need her. And, well, you know, this is a great team. Now, what's missing in that photo is, there's a blank photo, because the ordinance called for seven commissioners, and we only have six. So this is the time that I remind the council, I remind the city, I remind all the commissions and boards as well as ours, and remind our residents that this commission works with all of us as a team. So we all need to be looking for those applicants so that they can fill this void. And hopefully those that look at what we've done, where we're going, will feel motivated if you ask to apply. So 2023, you know, we said that some of our goals, we really wanted to, some staff support for the DEIC, and we've got that with Carolyn. We talked about DEI hiring and training, and that was a big topic, if you remember. We talked, that was a really big part of the budget discussions, you know, why did we need a consultant? And we got that in place. And we had our first session. I think they're in the process of talking to council members, and we've got a plan, you know, to get other commissions and boards and city staff, you know, involved in this training so that we can all be on the same page. You know, it says up here immigrant event, you know, what we're really looking for and hoping to do is what you just talked about, you know, have, there's some things on the table that are coming up in 2024 that's going to integrate the city, the residents with the diversity that's in this community. We've got Welcome Week that we're working on. We've got this June, we've got some other things coming up that's going to really help, I think, show the city that everybody should feel inclusive and everyone should feel welcome. And all cultures are going to be represented, we hope. You know, we talked about police training. If you remember, they had the de-escalation training that we were part of, you know, last year, and that's ongoing, and there's more coming. Get more involved in the schools, local businesses. We have, you'll see from the slides, you know, we have a lot of things going on with the schools and more to follow. And we talked about needing funding to support outreach events. And you gave us some of that. We, the city and us funded the Nubian Jam out in Everett. We funded, we were sponsors for the Step Up to Action, you know, that's coming up again, to name a few. So we did that, we asked for it, you came through with it, and we appreciate it. And before I pass it on to Vanita, just some high points of additional accomplishments. You know, one of the things I think we're all proud of is, you know, how we have started to give some advice on proclamations and how we can make them an eventful happening rather than just announcing a proclamation. And we saw just last week, you know, something that the city had never seen before, you know, and I think we said that also the year before, how meaningful it can be if we just think outside the box, and we're proud of that. The tree code, you know, we had several meetings in 2023 on the whole tree plant, tree planting plan, and they came to us and asked us for our insight so that they could make sure that they had an equitable lens when presenting it, doing it, making it happen. And we're thankful for that. We recommended DEI funding for, you know, training and strategic planning. We talked about that just now. That was a big one. You know, as you all know, because you all were here, you know, we asked, there was a lot of discussion from the day one, you know, because we just didn't know what to do, you know? And now it's starting to bear some fruit. You know, we recommended joining gear and welcoming America, and feel free to answer any questions about that later if you're interested in knowing what those are. But what you're really going to be excited about, I hope, is when we talk about some of the events that we did to develop relationships here in the community. Vanita?
All right. So some of our accomplishments for 2023. We onboarded four new members to our commission in the middle of the year, and we celebrated the stepping off of the commission for our previous members. And then for the comprehensive plan, Commissioner Matsuda has added that to his work and is involved in the comprehensive plan. And so we've reached out with posters and flyers, and we've connected with different members within our community to try and get additional voices heard on that survey and more input. All right. So the DEIC has endeavored to add community involvement and deeper meaning to city council proclamations, especially identifying folks within our community and trying to highlight some of those things that have been historically marginalized and groups that are underrepresented. So we're very proud of that and excited for the continued collaboration. So we proudly connected with the Arts Commission for input and then held discussions with city folks to add diverse messages to welcome people to all of the public spaces. We've connected with the Edmonds School District and DEIC Community Connections. So Mount Lake Terrace is one of five municipalities that Edmonds School District is involved in, and they have encouraged us and helped support us to connect with other DEICs in cities and municipalities that they're involved in. So we're a busy group of folks. Last year, we celebrated commission members who moved in July, and we have new people who just jumped right in.
All right. Relationship building. We're serious about being inclusive and more diverse and creating more equity, then we should make an effort to build relationships. Relationship building and participation are core principles of our commission. So we began 2023 with attending and participating in the Martin Luther King Celebration, and we had a read aloud event during the Black History Month here at the library. We helped sponsor and we participated in Snow County Racial Equity Step Up to Action Conference and organized a Persian First Day of Spring Celebration known as No-Raz, which is Farsi for New Day at Amazon.
And as was already mentioned, we did accept the Juneteenth, oh, sorry, we accepted the proclamation for the Juneteenth for the city. And then we also had a member, some members participate in the Linwood Juneteenth Celebration. In terms of relationship building, that's really important because, as Vanita was saying, these municipalities are all so close together. So, you know, our, people from our city are likely to be engaged in that. We show up, we make known that we have a DEI commission and that we are here to help celebrate an important time for our Black community, and that helps build relationships. And, you know, hopefully we'll be able to have some similar celebrations here. Unfortunately, in June last year, we also, one of our former commission members experienced a hate attack because of her gender identification, and we were able to speak out to the council on her behalf about that. I think it's really important that we have a relationship with our underserved populations because they need to know that there is a part of the city that they can go to and talk about these issues if they need to. I think a lot of times we think that there's not much going on in that regard, but people, if they don't feel like they're going to be heard, they aren't going to speak up and tell us about these things that are happening. And so that's another important relationship. Trust is something we need to really build. Also, a commission member presented to the Mount Lake Terrace School Gender and Sexual Alliance Group a proclamation in honor of Pride Month. That's another example of our relationship with the schools in terms of engaging them.
Your commission attended, volunteered, and participated in Snow County Chamber of Commerce BIPOC meetings, the League of Women Voters, the Sign Up New Voters, National Night Out, the Nubian Jam in Everett. You've seen us marching at the Tour de Terrace Parade. We facilitated the welcome signs, as you see here in various buildings, City Hall, the Police Department, the Library, and Community Pavilion.
In October, we shared ideas with the development of South County DEI Commission Group to share and coordinate events and activities. Again, that's another example of maintaining relationships with other DEI commissions in the area. We also recognized Hispanic Month by issuing a proclamation to Alvaro Guian, who was our former chairperson, right, prior to me. And several of us attended the proclamation event, and he was really grateful to be receiving There was also a Linwood Hispanic Heritage Month Cultural Day, and again, that's, I think, where we made contact with Dr. Guzman and some others. And then I attended a representation, I represented the commission at the Communities Against Hate presentation on extremism, and there was a really good panel at that event. And one of the, you know, I'm really new to DEI and new to the city. I've only been here 18 months. But one of the things that I gained from that was the panel was really clear that one of the things we really need to do is show up and be willing to have the discussion. It's not always comfortable. As a matter of fact, for people that look like me, it's quite often very uncomfortable, but it's really, but it's really important. So the other thing that was discussed was sort of the history of hate groups in the area and how they evolved. But one of the other main messages there was that we have to speak out about these things because they really thrive in silence. So that was, that was really impactful for me, but I think, you know, informed some of my feelings about the commission. We also, in November then, moved on to, we went to the ribbon cutting at Shahi and Tondor Grill Restaurant, and there was quite a few of us there. The mayor was there and some other council members. And they were really, really grateful to have us there, and it's important to support minority-owned businesses. There was, commission-attended Washington State Coalition of African Leaders workshop in Linwood at the Linwood Senior Center. Again, that's another way to engage with members of the community that have possibly links to people who might want to start businesses here. And then attending Chamber of Commerce meetings, Mount Lake Terrace Briar, Chamber of Commerce Community Coordination Meeting at the Mount Lake Terrace Library, making any connections we can to help encourage minority businesses is important. One of our members also had a Zoom training session for how to write a resume and how to interview in the USA for refugees. It's important to help people in underserved populations explore entering the local workforce and give them resources. And so that was another thing that we did for relationship building.
And December, now, lest you think we're DEI sages, we recognize our amateur status. So we're participating in intensive DEI training, and we've also reached out to neighboring cities, Linwood, Edmonds, Shoreline, to understand how they manifest DEI, and we discussed ways to collaborate.
So in summarizing, you know, our activities, I think for all of us, especially myself, who's been in this since October of 2020, you know, I'm always asking myself the question, are we making a difference? You know, and what I, I did some research, if you will, and since this commission has come to exist, we have to note the obvious paradigm thought shift in language that has become increasingly evident coming out of City Hall as well as the city. I did an archive search in the city records of a particular word. I found this word 360 times that was used, either in written or spoken format for any purpose. November 20th of 2019 was the first time this word was in the context of DEIC, when a presentation of the Linwood DEIC was given to the council. Prior to that, there were only nine other documented instances of the use of this term, and there was no documentation prior to 9/24/2015. Since we started in October of 2020, there has been 335 uses of this word. So the point of all of this is our existence has made a difference because the 335 uses of the word inclusion kind of spells that out, that I think that our presence had a little bit of something to do with that. So our 2024 work plan. Scott?
We'll continue our training. Mike?
Continue our training, participate in DEI training, and provide feedback on the next steps for training. We'll plan, participate, and help guide the development of the DEI strategic plan with the ultimate recommendation of a plan to the city council. We plan to engage or continue to engage.
Thank you.
To broaden.
Can I talk?
Oh, okay.
Thank you. We're all very excited. So it's only March, and DEIC has been already honored to attend dinner with the mosque, a naturalization ceremony at the library, a diversity fair with Edmonds School District. We continue to engage with the League of Women Voters for civic outreach. We're connecting with schools, with parent groups, as well as the Mount Lake Terrace Briar Chamber of Commerce.
And we're continuing to help prepare DEI-related next steps for training. We'll plan, participate and help guide the development of the DEI strategic plan with the ultimate recommendation of a plan to the city council. We plan to engage, or continue to engage.
Thank you.
To broad-
Can I talk?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
We're all very excited.
Yeah.
So it's only March. And DEIC has been already honored to attend dinner with the mosque, a naturalization ceremony at the library, a diversity fair with Edmunds School District. We continue to engage with the League of Women Voters for civic outreach. We're connecting with schools, with parent groups, as well as the Mount Lake Terrace Briar Chamber of Commerce.
And we're continuing to help prepare DEI-related proclamations and opportunities to learn more about these commemorations throughout the year. When we had dinner with some folks from the mosque, we spent a lot of time talking to them about their process during Ramadan. And that was really interesting and it was wonderful to be able to present them with the proclamation right after that. And then celebrate, of course, we want to try to be involved in celebrations at other municipalities as we get invited to do that. But it would be wonderful to plan some of our own. And we want to participate in Welcoming Week, which is, I think it started out in the U.S., but it's an international thing now that helps make people feel a sense of belonging, especially people who are immigrants into the community. And so we're hoping to get more information on that and become part of that whole Welcoming Week family.
And lastly, you know, equity goes in policy. You want to continue to work, you know, with the city on recommendations to the comprehensive plan as we, as those come out. And I think that, you know, what that means is that in order to do that, we have to, you know, put our boots on and we've got to make sure that, you know, we have a voice, that we're at the table, have a voice at the table, and that we're heard. And I'm really grateful for Scott because he's at the table, he speaks at the table. And any recommendations that we've came up with, not only has he brought them to the table, but they've acted on some of those recommendations. So we should be proud, we should be proud of his involvement. And we've got to continue to evaluate DEI broadly, you know. As was mentioned with the Arts Group, and I'm sure the Planning Commission is going to say the same thing in the REX, you know, we got to help, we got to get more involved with supporting the other city plans, you know, the things that other people are doing. You know, we're not here to tell anybody what to do. We're here to be an extra finger on the hand, an extra arm on the body, maybe an extra foot to help get things done. And have everyone have an opportunity to make sure that anything that we're doing, you know, has an equity lens. Everything that we're doing is making sure that we're all, everyone's included in the community. And, you know, we're still, like Scott said, you know, we are all still learning about DEI. And, you know, my view of DEI has changed a lot since 2020. You know, we, you know, I had a great conversation with, was it the Puget Sound Region People Council? And just thought that type of education, you know, enables us to serve the city better, you know, as we, you know, go along our way. So those are, those are, those are our goals for 2024. And we're opening up for any questions or discussions.
All right. Thank you so much. Any, any questions, comments from our council? Councilmember Murray and then Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for being here. It's so nice to have so many folks from the DEI Commission here. I will start with a thank you to Chair Page as your council liaison. You know, I think your leadership and dedication and care and energy and all of the other attributes that you bring to the table has been, I think, an integral part of the success of this commission and the forward momentum, you know, that we are seeing here before us as we hear about all of the amazing things that this group has done over the course of the last year. So thank you for that. I know that that has not always been easy and I am grateful for the care that you have for our community and your leadership of the commission. And Deputy City Manager Hope, also very grateful for you jumping right in after you were hired to help staff this group. They are an energetic group that is out there doing and contributing. And it is incredibly helpful to have staff support to make those things, to help facilitate the goals and the aspirations that they have. So I really appreciate all of the work that you do in support of the commission as well. And to the rest of the commission, I just, it's been such a fun, being your liaison these last, this last year, and, you know, has just been amazing. I'm excited about the year ahead. You know, I think the work speaks for itself, so I don't know that I have much else to say other than thank you. I think you're doing amazing work. I love that you, I love, I love the stat about inclusion and I think that pulls it together in a really nice way. You are making a difference. You are making our community better and more inclusive. And I'm incredibly grateful for the work that you do and I'm excited to see what the future holds.
All right. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just glad we have a commission that we can turn to for help when, to work with our underserved and underrepresented citizens of our community. So thank you very much for your help.
Thank you.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll echo what's been said already. I think, you know, the work speaks for itself. I think, you know, I and we see you showing up, you know, with, with community, really changing. I think the, I hesitate to call it sort of adding a dimension to sort of city government, but it, you really are as a commission. You know, you and, you know, the past commissioners really have changed the paradigm as the chair was saying, you know, being a resident and seeing folks discuss, you know, in a frustrated way, you know, the things that they didn't see, a lens or a forum to address, you know, issues of racism or of not, not feeling seen or heard. You know, the weeks, the work speaks for itself and you're really bringing us along, I think, this year and this coming month really is important for me as a council member, seeing that we're going to be sitting down and working with, you know, experts and having hard, uncomfortable conversations. And, and as our, as council members, I think it's really key that we think about, you know, all the things that we can yet do as well. But really want to commend you for your, your hard work. It's, it's terrific to see you out, really helping folks feel, and community who aren't represented in this room, in this space, in this sort of organization, participate in a way that at least for my part, I haven't seen before. So that, I think, speaks volumes. And I think one, one thing I'd, I'd like to, you know, keep planting seeds here tonight, but really interested in seeing how we as a city can engage our tribal governmental neighbors. I know we have a lot of, a lot of residents in town who are enrolled, different native tribes. And we have a, we have a lot of renowned Native American residents and, and people who hail from, from Mount Lake Terrace. And I'm not only speaking of Lily Gladstone, but I think there, we, we as a, as a city government and a part of this state, really, really need to have better communication with, with our neighboring tribal governments. And would love to talk to you more about that. But I'll stop there and share my, my thanks there.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep mine short. Again, just thank you all for the work that you have continued to do and the innovation that you're bringing to the table. In reference to your open seat, I would encourage you to look back at some of the past commissioners, perhaps, having been there with you when it was in the beginning. It's always hard to get your sea legs under you. And although I think you all did a wonderful job navigating those waters, might not have felt that way on the ground, mixing my metaphors here, but nonetheless, that would be my recommendation. I also wanted to say that I thought that was funny. You came in and you mentioned you did some research and it made me wait like everybody else to see what it was. So I thought that was interesting. And I just want to let you know, when I joined the council, which was just over five years ago, February, I did something similar. We happened to be looking at the webpage, which we are updating again as we speak. And so I did a quick search and I actually did the word diversity. And at that time, so five years ago at that time, three entries came up. Two were on biodiversity and the other diversity was Steve Woodard joined the council. I didn't laugh, but I understand why we laugh because it's hard to take that news in and it's a deflection mode. But I do want to say, five years later, you put that same word in and there's 412 entries now. And interesting enough, if you look at it closely, you'll see only 10 of those entries predate 2018. The rest of them start in 2019 moving forward, which is exactly five years ago, if I did the math. Not a coincidence, which is just a reminder, as representation matters. So when I see you all out there, first and foremost, the makeup, and I do mean the racial makeup of this DEI is absolutely fabulous. Representation matters. This is not any one person's issue. This is a community's issue to solve, to live together, to strengthen, whatever terminology you want to go, either direction. You do it together, you do not do that alone. So I just want to acknowledge that. But more importantly, and as silly as it might sound, you all wearing those name badges? Outstanding. We had representation just across the way at the library just the other day when we brought in 32 new U.S. citizens. Folks who said, I'm leaving my country, I want to join this one. And we were in that space. The mayor gave a wonderful talk, but to have you all in that space was awesome. And you were wearing your name badges, which couldn't be more inviting than to say, you might be somebody to talk to. And then they get to read your name badge and go, wow, we might be somebody to talk to because they see themselves in your name. Just today, once again, we had an opportunity to welcome a new resource into our city at Mount Lake Terrace High School and we were in the space again. Mayor was there as well, always representing us. But to have others take some of that pressure off of her is amazing. So again, thank you all for the work that you continue to do. I hope the Art Commission feels that same love. That's what I'm trying to generate. And I did say I'd be quiet, so now I'll be quiet.
So I just want to mention, I was appointed to the City Council in 2008 and I didn't bring diversity?
They didn't talk about it.
Apparently not.
Alani Williams?
Go ahead, Councilmember Sonmore.
Thank you. Because when I worked at the college, I was involved with international students and that was our diversity. And so we had a different language back then. And it was all international as, and this was many, many years ago. But it was quite interesting to see how it's evolved and how, you know, even at the college, how diversity is involved. But I know this is a funny thing, but I just wanted to tell you that when you mentioned the new member, I had to get out a piece of paper and think of, you know, who could I invite or encourage to come. And so that's something that we can all think about. But the thing that struck me the most with this presentation, and it's not that your words didn't touch me, but what touched me was anxiously awaiting. And, and you know what? And I love that new space because we're talking about the new language, but making space. And, and that right there kind of put it in perspective of how welcoming that you all are and how that you all represent the city. And Teresa, welcome to the city, by the way, after 18 months. And Scott's a neighbor of mine, so real close. But it's just nice to see that you're making space for things that, you know, we haven't thought about. We hadn't word searched or we haven't evolved in certain ways. And so I appreciate the time that you guys take out of your schedules to do something like that because you don't have to, right? You have other things you can do, but you, you are making a difference, like you said, because each one of you is taking that time to make that difference. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands going up. Oh. Mayor, put them.
I know. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, thank you. I mean, I echo everything that everybody said. You guys, it's really exciting to see this finally coming together. And I think it was a combination of, you know, your leadership for years and dedication, Carolyn's coming on board and giving staff support, real staff support that you guys needed, having a budget to be able to help support the commission, having, and finally, we've been talking about it for years, it's frustrating that it took so long, but we're finally getting consultants on board to give us direction, help us develop the strategic plan and the direction of where we're going. And, and, you know, so much value that you bring to our community and appreciate us being able to channel that through you and be able to take advantage of the opportunity, the ability to reach out now to underserved communities and being able to touch them and offer a place for them to turn to. But, you know, I, I think a lot of it for me, and council knows this, you may know, I travel a lot, a lot. And so I see diversity through the lens of actually being out there and experiencing the world and what amazing different cultures we have in different places. And that, I want the rest of our community to have that opportunity to see other cultures and what they, how they celebrate, what they do, what they, you know, how the song and dance and eating and, you know, the great food. And I mean, it's just, it is amazing world out there. And being able to celebrate all those different cultures here in our community would be so wonderful. So I'm really looking forward to working together with, in addition to everything else that, that you guys are doing and a great work plan. I appreciate the direction we're going and excited about how it's all coming together finally. But I really do look forward to celebrating our cultures, all the different cultures that are represented here in the community and being able to share that with others because it really, it gives, if you do have the opportunity to travel, it gives you a different perspective on the world and a different appreciation for the value that each individual from their, from the different cultures bring and offer. And, and not everybody has that opportunity to be able to travel and see and experience different cultures. But there, but if there's something we can do to help bring that, I think that when you do travel, it opens your eyes a lot. And so being able to bring that to our community and share the different cultures within our community with others, I think will help open a lot of eyes and be able to see things differently. So I think there's a great opportunity for us to be able to, to start working in that direction as well and really celebrate the different cultures that we have. And, you know, there's a lot of things we've talked about, a lot of, there's certainly equity and inclusion. And dealing with, with that is critical for us to be all successful together. But we need to celebrate that, that diversity and that, that where different people coming from different places. And it, and it really is a wonderful thing that too many people don't understand or don't see. And we see so much, I won't get into all of that. It's just, it's frustrating to see the hate out there in general. I'll leave it at that. But, but I think let's refocus rather than trying to stop the hate, let's celebrate the love and appreciation that we have for each other. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you very much. Did you want, did you want to take a break now or?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We'll take, we'll take a three minute-
Yeah, two hours worth.
Three, a three minute, three minute break. Okay. Thank you. We're back in session. And we're going to now have the Planning Commission give their, give their presentation.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. I'm substituting for our planning department tonight, Carolyn Hope, Deputy City Manager. And I'm going to give an introduction and overview of the accomplishments for 2003 and work plan for 2004. And our fellow, my colleagues here from the Planning Commission are here to answer questions and provide anything that I may have missed. But first of all, I'd like to introduce Chair Nick Batista. We have Adam Betcher and Deneen Thompson with us. But also, we have some other folks who are not here with us tonight. So I just wanted to make sure we acknowledge Vice Chair Isaac Harrison. We have Clark Morgan, Janice Denson, and Steve Landis. I also want to start out the, just before we get into all the accomplishments, I want to acknowledge the really complex work that the Planning Commission does. This is tedious work, just right up there next to the City Council, working on complex plans, policies, zoning code. And this year in particular, there's quite a few big projects that the commission has been working on and has before them. So I also want to acknowledge- So I also want to acknowledge that it is not only staff in the community that notices, but we've even had consultants provide comment that the Commission has provided an outstanding amount of great advice and content in their review of documents. So thank you all for what you do. It is maybe not the most fun type of commission to volunteer for, but it is certainly challenging and strategic, so. Anyway, in 2003, there were, sorry, 2023, what year are we in? Like I mentioned, we had some pretty significant, can you read that or I can blow it up a little more? So the Commission was very involved in reviewing the Engineering Development Annual, which is coming to council soon for review. The council most recently reviewed the Private Recreation Facilities Zoning Code Amendment, which was also really challenging. And the Planning Commission worked hard with staff to think about alternative ways to address that issue and I saw that on the backend, so really appreciate that creativity. There's been updates to the municipal code related to building and construction and recently the fire code and of course the tree code. So those were really major accomplishments, a lot of changes for one year in the code. Also, as you know, we're working on the Comprehensive Plan and we've had a rather tight timeline and I have to commend everyone involved in that work, the Planning Commission and the CPAG and the council and so forth, for working intensely on the various topics that the Comprehensive Plan covers and also participating in our community engagement work. So the Planning Commission also has been really active in coming to the open house and sharing information about opportunities to participate in the Comprehensive Plan. And then of course, we have planning commissioners on the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Group as well, and so that's an additional meeting every month to participate in and support the work. Other topics that have come before the Commission include our Sound Transit project. We had a zoning code amendment for, I'm sorry, an annexation for a particular parcel that is ongoing and that one also has been interesting and challenging. And then we had the chair attend the APA conference this year, the state conference. I will move on to the work plan and then we can go to questions. See if I can, I guess you can see that. All right. So again, carrying over into this year, we have the planning, sorry, the Comprehensive Plan and very shortly, we'll be seeing a draft environmental impact statement for the Comprehensive Plan. So those are really big topics as well as what, another plan that's coinciding with that is the Transportation Master Plan. And so that plays into the comp plan intrinsically. So those are all coming at the same time this spring. Annually, the Planning Commission looks at potential amendments to the Comprehensive Plan through the docketing process, so that will be coming up as well. We recently reviewed the fire code and upcoming, we have Critical Areas Ordinance, Middle Housing Work, and ADU updates to our development code. And then we will be doing development review along the way. We have some big projects coming our way. So commend you all for all this great work and happy, if any of you want to add anything that I didn't cover very well.
Yeah, I think, I know Commissioner Betcher has some comments he might like to make. I know I have some comments too, so I'll go ahead and start it off. So some of this was kind of covered in our 2023 accomplishments, but I'm sure most of the council is aware of what we do, but I thought I'd just kind of run down, jot some quick notes here while I was waiting. So the Planning Commission, you know, we inform and make recommendations on utility code, transportation code, land use code, fire code, engineering code, building code, various zoning codes, tree code, and our recommendations inform on parks rec and open space as well as the ability to facilitate public art. We are a mandated body by the state, so it's a unique distinction that we have. As part of that, we also require to take mandatory training. That's another unique decision, distinction that you don't see in a lot of other boards and commissions. A lot of that takes place through continuing education, usually that's sponsored by, you know, the APA with short courses and other types of training like that. But members of the Planning Commission also participate in graduate level education to learn kind of all the new trends that are happening. So it's just this continuing process of learning new things. It's not sort of resting on our laurels. Part of being on the Planning Commission, we have to understand new development trends and building sciences. That's constantly changing and updating. What maybe we thought was kind of standard five years ago has completely changed now. So we have to be aware of that and adjust on the fly in a lot of cases. The Planning Commission as a body and as individuals in the past have fought for recommendations and improvements for regional transit connectivity with Sound Transit. And some would argue that remains an ongoing battle to this day with Sound Transit with some of the decisions that they make. The Planning Commission has more meetings than any other boards and commissions for the city. Probably the City Council is the only body that meets more than we do and our meetings can go well late into the night because of the amount of workload that we have and how important, you know, the recommendations that we make inform you as a body. I think I would just sort of finish up with it saying, you know, the topics that the Planning Commission works on informs the health, safety, welfare, economic vitality, growth and sustainability for the city both now and for the future. So with that, I would pass it on to my fellow commissioners if they have any other statements they'd like to make.
Thanks. What a surprise, we have statements to make. So I just want to say, this is a really critical juncture and I think everyone kind of recognizes this in our development, especially this year. We're having a new Comprehensive Plan update as well as the light rail opening. And we know that this is an inflection point of change for our community. And so the work we're doing here is really important. And I think I may have dreamed this, but I feel like I was here a few years ago and I said, please give the planning staff resources because the work they're doing is really important. And as I go around the town, I think the Forest Crest Playfield is just one example of like some of the creativity I've seen from their resourcing come up. I've seen buildings that have been abandoned for a long time that look really environmentally problematic start to become new things. Specifically, the old dental office off of the inner urban trail is now becoming like a daycare. Like, I thought that would be an impossible building personally. We've seen, you know, underutilized lots starting to become buildings. So I think the resourcing that we are, like, we're seeing results from the support that we're giving our staff and the staffing up that we've seen. So thanks for that and I hope we continue that because I think that makes me really positive for the future of our community. And I know the Comprehensive Plan sort of looks a lot like, you know, a bunch of bullet points and things like that, that eventually further down the line become a bit of a, you know, like we stuck a dictionary in a blender and hit it out and it just spat out a bunch of terms like ADUs and FARs and whatnot. But I think right now, like, there's really critical work we need to do, which is more about not just defining kind of what the goals are for the Comprehensive Plan, but it's really articulating a vision of who we are and what we are as a community and how we can seize on those things and then grow in the future. And so I know we're here to advise on that and as the body that is in charge of that, I would hope that, you know, I, one of the things I think, you know, we're trying to get in is more vision statement type statements for different elements of the Comprehensive Plan. And I think, you know, one of the things I would hope we would do out of this process is to have sort of a succinct and, but also, you know, thoroughly detailed vision of what we are as a community and what each of these elements winds up being as part of the community. So I look forward to, you know, we're working with CPAG on that. We have some community workshops, but I think, you know, council and all of the community have a role to play in arriving where that is. And so I look forward to everyone's input on that as we move forward and how we can work together to articulate a clear vision of what we are as a community and how we want to grow. And all of those things are very important and have a lot of work, so definitely lots of opportunity to work together. So thank you so much for the support you've been providing and we look forward to it in the future.
I don't really have much more to add to what's already been said, more than I have grown as a citizen. I, I'm a Mount Lake Terrace citizen that works in a finance department in a local company. I know little to nothing about planning a city, but the experience that we have here on the commission and the training that Chair Batista brought up has helped me grow in that and helped me to understand how to move forward with all these bullet points. Like they said, they look like just bullet points for us, but they're long hours worth of bullet points that we spend here and have to explain to our family why we're here. But I just want to say, one, mostly thank you for the growth opportunity that my fellow commissioners have provided me as a learning opportunity. And we have people who probably couldn't make it today because of their family obligations. One of them is Chair Landis, is a brand new father, so that's probably what he's doing right now to a second child. And they, I like their energy that they bring to the commission too. You know, they're new and I don't think they have as much training in planning and city planning as Chair Betcher does and, I mean, Chair Batista does and Commissioner Betcher does, but I, they still get involved and they get, are energized by what we bring, even though it's not as exciting as DEIC, but it's still very important work and, and I like that we are being recognized. And it's funny, I like that Ms. Hope brought up that people outside the city are bringing this up. I was in the AMPM and someone did recognize us and it was someone that we helped with the recreation facility, how we changed that code amendment. And he wanted to thank us for helping get that moved along to, I don't know if it's coming for you yet, I think it has, yes. And so he was happy that we were all involved in that and helped get that along. So we are getting some recognition, even though we don't have a large crowd of people to come to the meetings, I wish more people would come, but someday we'll get there. And I just want to say thank you to my fellow commissioners for helping me grow.
So now, ask for questions?
Yes. If you have any questions, let us know.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Councilmember Woodard and Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Firstly, I just want to say, of course, across the board, thank you for the work and thank you for the time and energy. Thank you for reminding all of us, especially those listening at home, that there are trade offs. We're here, which means we're not with our family, even though we're here on behalf of our families, but still, there's an actual tangible trade off there. So thank you for that and I hope the other commissions know that true to them as well. That said, it was exciting to see our chair was able to go to the Washington State American Planning Conference. I don't ever recall seeing that on these before. I don't know if that's new, but I would just say, as I started off by saying that each of the commissions, we created a pool of monies, it would be for opportunities like this. So obviously you all aren't, well not obviously, most likely you all aren't going to put on some grand event that the Arts Commission or DEI or even ARPA might put together, but as you just pointed out, you're having some responsibilities that perhaps they don't. So I trust that that community engage, or the continuing education dollars aren't coming out of your pocket or out of your stipend, if we give you a stipend, I don't actually know, offhand, but nonetheless, just things like that for you all. This council was wise enough to say, hey, let's not forget the Planning Commission and I'll put my card on the table. I didn't even think to put you all in that list because I just felt like you all are us. Why would you need money? You're like us. But they made it very clear, no, you all should be part of that. So I just want to make sure that as you're educating yourself on behalf of this city, and that includes our resident expert chair here, because I'm sure as he says, every year it changes, so you're still reeducating yourself. I hope you all find a collective way to really access those funds again for yourself, but really on behalf of the city as a whole. And again, thank you all for the work that you do.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan.
Well, I know everybody here I could speak for would really appreciate all the work you do and the time you put in because you have some really tough things to analyze and think about. And I hope it doesn't keep you up too late at night thinking about them because sometimes, you know, it does, bothers you and I appreciate you, all the work and time and leadership for this position. Thank you.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all of you for being here tonight and all of those who aren't here tonight as well for all of your work. I would just echo all of the thanks and appreciation as somebody who did not start off on the Planning Commission, which many of our council members did. This is an area where I have to be a lot more intentional when we have things that are coming through. And so, you know, I do tune into meetings sometimes and I'm always amazed at the thoughtfulness and your approach and incredibly grateful for all of the work that you do before things hit our plate because by the time we see them, they are, you know, you have had thoughtful conversations at Planning Commission, you've given lots of opportunity for the community to engage and it is easier for us to, to move forward with a path that makes sense and supports our community. So I'm just incredibly grateful, excited for the work ahead and appreciative because I know that there's a lot of work that goes into that. But looking forward to, I think, your point about partnership. I think, you know, there's a lot of that ahead this year and I'm excited to engage in that with one another and it is incredibly important. I think we talked about, I mean, the work that all of our commissions do makes a difference and it matters and, you know, I loved that the DEIC called that out. That is absolutely true for the work that you do as well. You are shaping the future of our community and that is vital. And so I appreciate that and maybe it's not, I was going to say, maybe it's not as exciting, although some people get really excited about planning, so. I was going to say, it might be out of, oh, fun. But I am grateful that it is. I am grateful it is either your idea of fun or you care enough about our community and the future of our community to spend your time making sure that the future is one that collectively gets us to where we want to go. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to pick on Adam now. No, I think actually Adam and Danine Commissioners Thompson and Betcher really laid out some really complimentary and key points here, you know. We can't do this work without staff and as a long suffering former Planning Commissioner myself, I think you do put in many late, late hours and are, I think, you know, a lot of fruit, the fruits of your effort are really coming to, to the fore here at council and, and, you know, I hear about it out in community, whether it's simplifying the fence code or, you know, looking out at what the, what the city is going to look like in 20 or more years. And I'd encourage you and staff and us to make sure that we can, you know, ground the decisions we're making in sort of feedback and, and connection with, with our neighbors around town because we're, we're, we're changing region, we're changing city and, you know, we've got, you know, a very specific sort of culture and, and, you know, history here in Mount Lake Terrace that, you know, is, is, you know, is being swept along with the rest of the region as we change and as we grow. So just want to thank you with, thank you for your work, but also, you know, I'd encourage you to, you know, connect with us as much as you can as we work through this comp plan. I think our Transportation Master Plan coming up is also going to inform a lot of what gets built and how it gets built and the things that we do with the, the thinking and the data we'll be collecting in that process. And I think this is sort of a generational moment as a comp plan always is, but we're, a lot of streams are, are joining here that these, these next couple of years that, you know, really rely on, on your clear thinking and your ability to connect with, with our neighbors. So. So thanks again and looking forward to the, the future.
Do you want to go? Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes. What is not fun and exciting about having the opportunity to shape our community?
Nothing.
Right? Exactly. This is, and this is the year that we live for, right? The comprehensive plan update. This is our opportunity to create the future of Mount Lake Terrace and put our vision down and give us direction for how we're going to grow. This is, this is it, folks. This year, this is the opportunity. We've been waiting 10 years. No. Right, yeah. But no, this, thank you for the work. I mean, having served on the planning commission for 15 years and being involved in this process, it used to be, by the way, every five years and it turned to every eight years and now it's every 10 years. So we went through several cycles of comp plan updates.
I thought it was more than just three.
Right, yeah. It's, that's another story and at any rate, but yes, so I appreciate the heavy lifting that you guys are going to be doing this year. It is, but it is important and critical and I think fun and exciting to be able to have the opportunity to be on the ground floor and shaping our community. So thank you.
All right, anyone else? Councilmember Sonmore?
Just my two cents. I know you guys are kidding it's fun, but between Nick and I, we know it's not always fun and it is a lot of hard work. You know, we've had those tough conversations over the years and Nick, what is it, 20th year, 18? 20, 20 year. And I remember when he got appointed and he hasn't let us down since. And what I appreciate you guys really doing is not having that group think mentality. I know we're being forced to build certain things and look at growth, but it's also something that's not always easy and I don't think everybody has to agree with it. And I think it's always important to question because you're representing our citizens and always have that in the back of your mind. What would your neighbor want? What would, you know, this person want, you know? And so it's, it's very important, you know, we can kid and Adam, I saw you walking that way when I was driving this way earlier today, but, you know, you think about the people walking down the street and what, what do they want? And the people that are going to be light rail walkers and participants taking that and looking at what they're going to be up against and are there enough trains to hold all those people that we're going to be putting on the light rail? Yes. Yep. And so there's a lot that goes into it. So just always remember, you know, have that keen eye and that strong sensibility that you're on this board for a reason and, and we just really do appreciate your time.
All right, anyone else? So I was on the planning commission for how many, five years before I got on the councils and it was at the same time with Nick, right? We were new together. So thank you so much. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you. Now we're going to have the Parks Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission come on up.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, City Manager, Assistant City Manager. I'm Ken Courtman, I'm the Parks and City Superintendent for the City of Mount Lake Terrace and I'm also the staff liaison to the Recreation Park Advisory Commission and to the Neighborhood Park Improvement Subcommittee. And they are here tonight, just like the rest of the groups, to present their work plan for 2024. So I would like to introduce the Chair of the Recreation Park Advisory Commission and that is Molly Luna.
Excuse me, Mayor, before we go any further, quick question.
Yes?
If we decline hearing this report, does that lock Ken into having to stay? Just want to check all the loopholes. Okay, it doesn't sound like it will. Just check it before we went too far. Guess we're done then?
We just don't want you to go.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council and the other staff who are here this evening. My name is Molly Luna, I am the Chair of the Commission and I am here tonight with several other folks I will introduce as we go in and present our work plan. So on the agenda tonight, I'll go over the roles and responsibilities of RPAC and also the roles and responsibilities of our neighborhood. This is what happens every time when I'm in like these situations, I freeze on all of the names of everything. Improvement Subcommittee as opposed to something that we would not improve. So we'll talk about our 2023 accomplishments, 2024 work plan, as well as take any questions that you might have. So with me tonight is Commissioner Audrey Meyer, who is the Vice Chair. Also here this evening is Commissioner Rita, who will be speaking tonight. And for moral support, Commissioner Lavoy, as well as, we also have a participant from our NPIS, Susan Kuhn is still in the back. So one person not here tonight is Commissioner At Home, so we're sorry about that, and Commissioner Nimi. I did want to take one second, as was made very evident, to mention Ken's departure coming up at some point in the future and just to take a very quick moment to say thank you for all of the time and all of the energy put into this. You're welcome. I try to do that. But yeah, obviously you guys already know the immense impact that Ken has had and I just would be remiss not to use this forum to say that. So thank you and to all the other staff. And one last thing, we would like to also have another person join us. One of our members had to move unexpectedly, so. The vision and the mission has not changed for, for us. You know, we are still here to be that interconnection between our government and the community. So we strive to nurture, support and promote a very well-connected and vibrant park system. And, you know, as, as part of what we're doing, we are building something that I think is recognized as regionally important as well. You know, the, the mention of all the different groups in terms of how we are so interconnected with the different municipalities, I think it's, it's very important that all the groups are looking across, how do we build community, not just for, you know, our own residents, which is incredibly important, but how are we expanding that? And so we do that through our mission. Obviously, we're encouraging people to utilize the facilities that we have, participate in the programs. Obviously, the, the staff do a great job of that already because we're full on a lot of things. We can't hire enough people. But the, the types of work that we do end up doing, we help to promote the parks, we get and gather input from folks, we participate in the different various recreation activities and other parks events. So for our roles, in our meetings, we do annual reviews of the various recreation and parks fees, the, the in-kind service agreements that we have with some of the different local sports groups. Like I said, special events, we have a lot of different ones going on in the past, we'll have again this year, we'll talk about a little bit later. We do also tour the parks, we're in the parks quite a bit. I ran into two of the park people the other day in Terrace Park, so we're out there quite a bit. I'll go to the next slide. And then, so Keith was going to talk tonight, Commissioner At Home, in regards to the NPIS. He has been serving as that liaison for a very long time and is very much involved and very appreciated, I should say. So you can see the list here in terms of representation. At the moment, we have representation for everything except for Forest Creek Park, so in process for that, but we've had some new folks come on this past year and it's, it's, we have great participation from the group. In terms of the roles and responsibilities of NPIS, they're even more closer to the ground, dedicated to a specific park that they volunteer for within a half mile of where they are, where they live. So they're dedicated to make sure that, that the parks have what they need, you know, raise up issues if there are things going on, try to be that conduit in terms of helping with, you know, what improvements are going on, what's happening in the park and then being that advocate. And I will hand it over to Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. 2023 accomplishments. Volunteers helped greatly in the many special events and with park cleanups and beautification. In 2023, there were 1,524 hours that volunteers put in, 200, a little over 200 hours more than the previous year. Many of these hours came from the Adopt a Park groups. These groups adopted a park or had a special project in mind for parks. There's the Ivy League that adopted Veterans Memorial Park, but has also moved on to other parks to remove invasive ivy. Sound Community Bank, which has tackled Terrace Creek Park, Friends of Ballinger and the Pooper Trooper helping clean up parks with their doggy bag services. And now in 2024, we have a new Adopt a Park group that is Brighton School. They adopted Jack Long Park. Yes. There were many successful events in 2023. The Arbor Day Volunteer Event had a record, record number of attendees, over 120. There was the 3rd of July, the Tour de Terrace, Movie Nights, National Night Out, the National Day of Service and the Tree Lighting. And in 2024, we are going to have several more new events, which is very exciting. Then there's the projects. The Parks Department has been doing so many wonderful things, working on so many large projects and it's been really great to be able to give input on these projects. The Evergreen Playfield resurfacing and there's continued improvements happening in that park. The widely anticipated Ballinger Park that I've seen has been very popular, there's always so many kids there. The restoration at Ballinger Park, adding, adding native plants, encouraging habitat. I just saw an otter there about a week ago. Yeah. The new bicentennial playground, a couple other updates to play equipment. Then there was the continuation of the Tree City USA. And as part of maintaining that status, we are, RPAC serves as the Tree Board. And then there was the Tree Code Update that found a balance between the development that needs, has to happen and maintaining tree canopy through either trying to retain or replant. And I'm happy to say in 2024, we are continuing on this path of tree canopy preservation with a street tree inventory and an urban forest management plan that is starting this year and will be completed in 2025. And then, of course, all of the planning with the Transit Connection Corridor projects. That's very exciting. All of the events could not happen without the many sponsors. I will not read them all because there's a lot and we are very grateful for them. Now I will turn it over to Commissioner Rita.
Right, yeah, keeping the momentum of an amazing year last year, especially with the, the Tree Code and the Tree Committee, great work with that. So we, some of the things that we do, our continuing work will be to review the recreation fee schedule for places like the swimming pool and the sports fields. We review in-kind service agreements and then our special events this year have expanded a bit. We have our Earth Day Volunteer Event on April 20th, we'll be cleaning up Veterans Park. We have our very large event at the 3rd of July at Lake Ballinger, our jewel and all of the amazing things happening down there. It's just spectacular to see all that and a lot of thanks to the grants that we've received and all the work of the Army Corps. Of course, we have the Tour de Terrace, very popular event, that'll be in July again, and then our National Night Out in August, the National Day of Service in September, and of course, our Tree Lighting Ceremony with the high school bands and the Hot Cocoa, always a fun event at our beautiful new facility here at City Hall. Other events that are on here that we should talk about because they are collaborations with the Art Council and those are the movie and music nights, they'll be at Terrace Creek Park this year. And so we're very excited for those events to expand community events and community participation and attendance at our beautiful parks because they really are amazing. I think our city is known for our parks. So one of those parks, the projects, the Hall Creek Restoration Project at Lake Ballinger and of course, the great improvements at Evergreen Playfield, the Ballinger West Side, we've talked about, including the viewing platform that we're working on, which will be amazing when it, when it's finished. And then the Veterans Memorial Park Upper Plateau Design, which of course will be our connection to the light rail and the trail system there. So all, all great things that will bring all of the things that planning does closer through the parks and also hosting events for the art community at the parks. I mentioned that the Tree Code Update that Audrey worked on and, you know, we're a Tree City, which is just amazing to be, to have that designation. More things that we're doing and the, the great work of, of the staff too, to write grant applications so that we could bring back the Sonics Court before the Sonics come back to Seattle, very exciting. Other projects, like we've talked about the Hall Creek Restoration Project. All of us attend input meetings for park planning to make sure that we're thinking about everything. We all get input from our neighbors. One of the things, like someone asked about, can we get some dog bags at Lake Ballinger? And then lo and behold, we have the Pooper Troopers there to do it. And so we get great feedback from our neighbors about the work that we're doing. We listen to our neighbors and, and we, we bring ideas to the meetings. We also tour the recreation and park facilities with the NPIS. We're expanding volunteer opportunities so everyone's involved, they have ownership of their city, of their parks, to make them beautiful and clean. We expand community events and outreach through pamphlets and our website and just us in person. And then we're assisting in the further implementation of the Ballinger Park Master Plan, which again, I can't stress enough, that's our connection to the inner urban, you know, it connects us to Edmonds, to Linwood and, and every other community that gets there via bike on the inner urban trail. Our work plan, some of the folks who are helping us, I won't name everyone, but it's just fantastic to see everyone here working to make the parks more beautiful. And, and so these are just some of our, our sponsors and folks who support volunteer activities, grants and other resources. And I'll turn it back over to our chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. So we wanted to, once again, say thanks for having us. Also, I was remiss, I did not call out Councilmember Sonmore for being our liaison, and she has been of a great support as well. So any questions or things that we can answer for you?
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Sonmore and then Ryan.
I'll start with this one. I've been waiting for you guys to come up to make the first comments. I have to tell you guys, this board is unreal. I mean, sometimes, I think, we've gone four hours with meetings. So Rick and I have left one before at 6:00 and then we, and the park rec meets at 7:00. And I think sometimes we get out of there at 10:00. I think last Tuesday night, we were like two and a half hours. But the progress that's made in these meetings is fantastic. And the passion everybody has for the parks is, it's just wonderful. And to have that representation. And when you mentioned we're kind of known for our parks, we are. And Ken, you're a huge part of that. And I hope you, I know you had talked about leaving like a legacy presentation and I don't know if we can keep for that or... I've heard about this and I was anxiously awaiting it. But I just want to really maybe not focus on the work at this moment. I'll let it, is just focus on each and every one of you because it's just wonderful. And Molly, we've been together for years. I mean, you've been helping the city as long as I can remember. And so each one of you holds a near dear place in my heart because you're a tree hugger all the way, you know? And so it's just nice to be able to be amongst you and hear all the education that you guys have about trees. It's amazing what you do and what you know about the tree canopy. I'm just kind of in awe when I go to these meetings. I want to talk and then it's like, shut up and listen. Just shut up and listen because there's so much to learn. So just thank you all for being there. And Susan, too, for all the work she's done over the many, many years and coming to the meetings. I just love hanging out with you. So thank you all very much.
Councilmember Ryan?
Ditto. But thank you very much. I know all the work that you do. I was a liaison for a while. It's not common knowledge, I don't think now, but it used to be. Ken does really good PowerPoint presentations. I think it's his hidden talent. So I'm wondering if that might come up in a month or two. I just don't know. But anyway, just wanted to say thank you and a little fun there.
I thought it was video montages.
They're slide shows.
Okay. Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all of you for being here, for all of your work. To those who aren't here, thank you to them as well. You know, it's already been mentioned how important, I think, our parks in particular are to our community and how so many folks experience our community and come in and discover our community. And you can't look around our community without seeing all of the incredible progress and investments that we have made in our parks in particular over the last five to 10 years in particular. And so just grateful for all of the thoughtful work that you do. I came into my official experience with the city through NPIS. So I am incredibly appreciative of the work that all of you do, incredibly appreciative of the staff support, Ken, that you provide and the countless ways that you show up for our community and share your love of our community in a way that helps inspire that love in others. And so I will not get super mushy right now, but I am grateful, grateful for all that you do and want to make sure that I say that as well while you are here tonight in our meeting. A couple of things that I will just throw out there because, again, I love, I love the parks and I love our recreation programs and I think they are incredibly important. When we talk about, I loved the theme of community through all of our commission presentations tonight. And that is why we are all here. We are here to make our community better and appreciate that all of you are making a difference as well. And so a couple of things, one, I would guess want to talk about the Tree Code. Like that was such, I thought, a thoughtful process. And by the time it came to us, I think that the thought and the care and the intentionality and the engagement that were part of that were just incredible. And so thank you for all of that work. And just excited about, you know, kind of looking at, what are, what are the other things that we can do to continue to look for opportunities like that? You know, to move our community forward and toward our goals and vision. I think one of the things that came up, I think, more recently in one of our conversations related to parks and recreation, we were talking about kind of the senior programming, you know, and our new relationship with the Edmonds Waterfront Center to support that, which is exciting. And we, I mean, self-identified that we have a gap when it comes to kind of how we serve particularly teens and seniors. And so I guess like that is something that I would encourage all of you to think about when we think about inclusion and community. Like how are we thinking about how we serve holistically all of our population? And their different needs at different kind of stages in life and depending on their lived experience, perhaps different needs. And incorporating that into how we think about what that future looks like in terms of both parks and recreation. And so that would just be my seed planting, I guess, for tonight is, I think that's something that came up recently. And I'm excited about, you know, the ideas, I think, to your point, like the conversations you might have with your neighbors or the things that you might have ideas around about how we can continue to build opportunity in those spaces. But so much good work, so the accomplishments were amazing. Excited about our next Arbor Day and hopefully we'll have even more folks there this year. I'd love to set another record. And so I guess 120 was last year. So I think I will take that as a personal challenge to see how we get, how we get more than 120 there this year. But thank you all for all of the really important and thoughtful work that you do. It's really, it's appreciated and it does make a difference.
Anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you all for the countless hours you probably put in, the amazing work that you do and the talents that you bring to this community, which I thought you were going down a different street. So I'm going to back up and make sure that we don't leave without acknowledging, you're the first council, excuse me, commission, outside of the Arts Commission, to do something for this city that I don't think anyone had done in a while, which one of you took their grant writing skills and rather than focus on themselves, said, I wonder what I can do for this city. And not only did they devote probably way too many hours, or free, but they messed around and secured those grants funding. So just want to pass that on to the commission as a whole because I suspect that was a group effort to support our writer, to say you can do this, and then to have that built-in community to think, to push through. And I know the city staff was very appreciative of that. I know the city council is super appreciative of that. Although we're focusing on one person, to your point, it's really the community that's been built so that one person can step in and say, hey, here's what I would like to do. And though they'd be supportive, I'm speaking for that person, but I presume that those are parts of what goes through someone's mind when they want to give their talent to a cause and they're not sure if that cause is going to be received, right? Because I remember when you joined us, we weren't even talking Tree Codes and Tree Canopies and all that. Now we have money to complete studies around these things. So it's one thing to identify a problem. It's another thing to step in and fix it or at least to add resources towards that dilemma. And each of these commissions does that. I just happened to be talking about one commissioner in particular because I, too, came up through our PAC. And I'm sitting on this council, I think, because of our PAC. And I've already had that discussion with the person who knows how I feel about their leaving. So that said, just want to thank you all, Commissioners, each and every one of you, for the dedication that you do. And may you all end up on this council at some point.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you so much.
No, we have, we have another.
Oh, we do? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll be brief and express my appreciation, too. But I think, you know, I'll focus on a part of your presentation that I think is really important. And Councilmember Sonmore let us off by recognizing, you know, that parks are what we're known for. And I know people travel far and wide to use the Rec Pavilion. And we're, I think, will increasingly be known for Lake Ballenger and our trail through Veterans as Light Rail opens. But I think, you know, understanding that, you know, at the top of the show, our city manager shared that we've got, you know, staff at the Pavilion. I think it's, you do a really, you help the community in a really special way that not many other cities are able to in keeping our, you know, small city running recreation program and a parks program that really punches above its weight, if you will, and really is, I think, a gem of our very egalitarian experience here in Mount Lake Terrace. And I think it shows up across your work. But making sure that, you know, we keep our humble sort of facilities running in a thoughtful way and that, you know, you keep, you know, you and staff keep our facilities open for all. And they really are, I think, something that connects us together and to this place. So really appreciate you for that. And Ken, look forward to working with you for many years to come.
I think he has one more, one more meeting with us.
Maybe.
Maybe. Yes. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, did you?
Oh, I mean, if you want me to. You know I will. No, actually, I'll just thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. So next is the review of the protocols for proclamations with our Deputy City Manager, Carolyn Hope.
Hello again. I have no presentations, just a short verbal presentation for you tonight. Tonight, we're here to talk about a potential internal proclamation policy. And I say internal because proclamations come from a variety of directions. As you know, city councils have a formality to issue proclamations for special events, occasions, to acknowledge historical times of the year that we commemorate and sometimes for special folks in our community. And your protocol manual does outline your ability to do that, but doesn't provide a lot of guidance. And so the city manager and I have been thinking about, how can we improve that process for you, for the community and staff who sometimes are folks who propose proclamations? And so we've attached a draft policy for you to give us some feedback on tonight. And I'll just walk that, walk through that with you. So first, proclamations again are opportunities to recognize, celebrate, and honor extraordinary achievements of residents or organizations or businesses in our community. They can acknowledge historical or cultural events or occasions. They can recognize accomplishments of city departments or employees or acknowledge things going on in our community, the county, state, or federal level, that support the mission of our city. They don't address political campaigns or messages or personal matters. And they're strictly honorary and not legally binding. So again, proclamations can be initiated from a variety of ways throughout the community. They can come from citizens in our community, organizations that we are affiliated with in the region, boards and commission members, the city council, and staff. And I gave some examples in the memo about how those might come forward. So in order to organize that a little better, we were suggesting that those requests come to the Deputy City Manager at least 30 days before the desired presentation date and that the city manager work on approving those requests and helping with, making sure that we have council informed of those proposals. Those would be formatted in the template that we typically use, signed by the mayor. And then the staff would be responsible for organizing, you know, getting it on the calendar, getting the draft language proposed and bringing forward any folks to receive proclamations in front of city council. So those, that's the proposal at a high level. And I'm happy to discuss any ideas you have about that.
Councilmember Sonmore?
I just have one. It's just off the cuff while I'm thinking about it. It says, recognize, celebrate, and honor the extraordinary achievements of residents. Can that be past residents, deceased residents, or students that go to school in the city of Mount Lake Terrace? Because often we have students that live in Breyer or somewhere else that we want to honor. And I just want to make sure we're not wrapped around the word residents where there can be some lenience about, because we just honored Mark who grew up in Mount Lake Terrace. And then, you know, we used to bring in like the basketball team or somebody. And then I think we've done it for, you know, a deceased member. And so I just want to make sure that that's acceptable.
I don't see why not. And that's up for council discussion as well. We can, we can make that language more flexible.
And I'm not saying it has to be too flexible, but I just want to make sure that we don't stop ourselves from recognizing something.
Yeah, we could say something like a substantial connection to the community, which I think would cover students who attend Mount Lake Terrace High School that might not live within the city limits. Sure.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Deputy City Manager, for coming and presenting this. I think it looks good. And I think continuing to, you know, add clarity in a way that could be, you know, applied consistently is important and helpful when we think about equity. I guess my only kind of building off what Council, Councilmember Sonmore said, I think in thinking about folks that we have perhaps recognized that maybe don't fall neatly under this definition, former city employees. I think that is something that we have recognized, folks who are no longer with the city, who have come back and been recognized. And so that may be something that we want to add, just a little bit more flexible language there as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Woodard?
We're not signing off on this tonight, are we? Is that fair to say? Perfect, okay. So let me get some thoughts out then. I will tell you, whenever somebody presents something like this, first question is, what's the timing? I think we all understand the timing. And then I look at, well, what we can and can't issue it for. And then I go, political matters. That's my entire life. So which part of my life can't get a proclamation? And I'm not trying to be facetious. I'm saying that's too broad for me. So since we're not signing off on it tonight, I would love to hear that broken down. Events or organizations with no direct relationships to the city. Well, this city's had its own quasi-redlining. So there's a lot of people who aren't here that maybe we should be considering that are doing great work in the county. I can't acknowledge them. Again, I don't know that we would do it through a proclamation. I'm just looking at broad statements that are trying to accomplish something but bring too much with them in the process. So that's just my feedback for tonight. I'm not opposed to this conversation. I'm not really even convinced that proclamations do anything. So it's like, let's not go fighting over something that's really nothing more than, as you point out, ceremonial. But I do want to recognize that although I don't know what we did when Mr. Floyd was killed, that was something that, by definition, would have been a political matter. I don't know what the city did in that response. I don't know, it's too far back and I was here. So I'm not trying to front-street. I was here, I should know as well. But the point being, it's things like that that we can't account for. I don't want to then find us in a city locked into, well, we can't even act because we didn't anticipate that. So now we got a long process before we can say anything, unless there's another path. And that's where I go, proclamations are a proclamation. There's probably other paths in that where they answer Steve Woodard's concern about not being able to do it as a proclamation if I have access to the other path. So don't spend too much time on this being my point.
And just to clarify, so it's the first two bullet points under should not be issued for that we should think more about?
Yes, just because it's so, you know, nebulous, if you will.
And yes, certainly we can take care of that. And like you said, another alternative might be a letter, which
Okay, Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor, and to tack on to Councilmember Woodard's comments, I think, you know, for, I had very similar thoughts, and, and also, I think, you know, matters of sort of elections related, I think, is a, in terms of political categories, you know, there are clear, there's clear guidance about separating city business from election, so I think that that at least is a clear sort of delineator in my mind, just while we're discussing.
Steve, I wanted to go back to your political matters. I understand where you're coming from, but then I see other things that come maybe before the council that is a political matter that maybe we all don't agree on at the same time, and I think sometimes that puts us into a spot where citizens think that we should just automatically do a proclamation and side for one side or another, and so, how do we delineate between something like that? It's just conversation of what does political matters mean, and I don't know if we have to get into that now, but I liked how it was written out.
Yeah, so we can, we can look at other language that may satisfy the concerns that have been expressed tonight, or at least the questions that have been expressed tonight, and present that to you again, and see if that, that satisfies the discussion points around the table tonight.
Mayor Breton Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, has this gone before DIC? Perhaps it should? Thank you.
Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I see on purpose the dots, paragraphs. I like, the proclamations are to recognize, celebrate, and honor. So, also, it could be the second bullet, acknowledge historical, culture, da-da-da, but it's more for honoring and celebrating things that are within our city. So, if it's nationwide, I don't think that would really fit with us, unless we had a spaceship, maybe, that, from outer space, that landed here, then we might do a proclamation for them, I don't know, just being funny there, but it is for us, our citizens, and it's in celebration of. It's not just recognizing things that are bad or happened bad in history, because then that, that takes up big books. Yeah, so, it is to, for me, a proclamation is celebrating and honoring someone. So, I think the first two paragraphs there kind of sum it up for me.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Yeah, while we're discussing, I think, you know, there, I can think of any number of circumstances where we're, where we might not be celebrating something, but recognizing, you know, history that might be uncomfortable or, or, you know, sort of correcting, you know, correcting past, past statements or past actions that, you know, for whatever reasons aren't, aren't, aren't couth, or there's not consensus about, you know, times change, and so do opinions. I think it's, it's healthy to have a conversation, as we're having now, about what, what statements we as, as the elected body for this city, you know, put out. So, I do think it's worth, you know, we don't, I don't think it sort of meets the need, although I think by and large we'll be honoring people, I don't think we need to be too Pollyanna about things, you know, because sometimes there are serious, there's serious subject matter that we do need to take pause and, you know, make, and proclaim something, you know, whether they're things that we've been approached about recently or, or not, I think it's, it's worth having that flexibility. And, and I, you know, I think we, we should consider having more sort of flexible or, or not, you know, don't, don't build the sideboards too tightly around, you know, limiting what a proclamation might, might entail or might proclaim.
Thank you. I think, what's the process then? Because we're kind of building the framework for a proclamation. So, I'd like as little gray area as possible. So, if there is something that is controversial that would like to be presented, what's that process? Is that at the bottom here? The process, number three?
Yes. So, the proclamation requests go to the city manager, and I believe that if he felt that something was controversial, that he would talk with you about that, inform you in your weekly email, seek your feedback on that. And also, just wanted to reiterate that proclamations are, like I said earlier, they're honorary, they're not binding, and if you wanted to make a more significant statement like we spoke about earlier, like writing a letter to a certain organization, might be a much more substantial way of expressing your opinion to a certain group.
So, if someone brought up a proclamation, we'd probably work through the city manager, deputy city manager, and then we'd work on consensus on that?
Yeah, very similar. I would seek all council members' input on what, what in particular we are looking to proclaim, and also, some of the draft language, if that was going to be considered to be in any way controversial, before it ever made it to a public meeting for a vote by, by members of the council. So, this is, the process outlined here also includes the step where I consult with, with each of you to determine, you know, what direction we're going to take.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Sonmore.
I'll just bring it up for a second. Steve and I were looking at a calendar, and we could have a, we could have 15 proclamations a month, just on the generalized Women's Month, different stuff, and Councilman Ryan was talking about, what I like to see in the way of proclamations is, you know, Mark came back, and we honored him for his musical talents, and I know another person that was on Queen's Rights, and he had this phenomenal personality with music, too, and just being able to honor people is huge for me, because the basketball team, these kids that are doing great things, it's nice to be able to honor them, and sometimes, we can get so broad that, what is the purpose of the proclamation? You know, it's like, Women's Month, and of course, I'm going to honor it, I'm a woman, but what if we don't honor it? Then, is it going against, you know, women in our community? I don't want it to be like that. I want it to be where we're actually going out and we have a plan on, you know, looking at people to recognize, you know, and so, there are very important issues to think about and to acknowledge, and, but, what's too much and what's too little? And I don't want to exclude anybody, but then, I don't want to have, you know, 500 a month, and so, where's the happy medium?
We agree with you, and so, we had proposed that we would try to manage no more than two proclamations in a meeting, in a regular business meeting, so that would be about four a month. And honestly, we're welcome, we welcome your ideas about what proclamations should occur, and definitely give us your ideas as, as far in advance as you can, and I know some things just happen, you know, someone wins the state championships, and we have a short amount of time to prepare, but we definitely want to make sure that we're reflecting what council desires in the proclamations.
Thank you, because there's tons of amazing past residents and current residents that we hear about that do these phenomenal things. I mean, I had an instructor who was an attorney who did all these, this is years ago, phenomenal things with law, and, I mean, that's just a crazy one to throw it out there, but, I mean, there's, there's people that...
He's the planning commissioner. Who, who win awards for their theater contributions, but, I mean, ask for, I guess, that we're kind of focused on and honor the people of not experienced, and, so...
Sure.
Sorry, we can work on language for that, and include it in the next draft for council to take a look at.
Okay. All right. So, we'll just have, give it back to you, and you guys can work on it, we'll work on it together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is public comment. Do we have any?
There are no one signed up in person or pre-registered.
Okay, and we'll go on to the next meeting agenda. That was on the draft agenda, that was on, we're just fine with it.
Good meeting.
Okay, then I'll move on to council comments. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll keep it quick. I just wanted to say it's March 14th, Happy Pie Day, and although most people think of the pie that you're eating, it seemed appropriate to have our meeting on this day, because it never ends. But, it is about to end, so, thank you, and Happy Pie Day, everybody.
All right, anyone else?
I don't know.
Okay, then that, we'll just adjourn then. Thank you very much.